Okay, good afternoon. I welcome everyone to Land Use Committee. Before we start, I'm gonna turn it over to Matt to do his script and also do a count when the committee members that's present. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee members, when I call your name, please respond to let everyone know that you're here. Chairman Reissinger?
Here.
Vice Chair Sneed?
Here.
Councilwoman Clark?
Here.
Councilman Costello? Slid your hand, thank you. Councilman Dorsey?
Here.
Councilman Middleton?
Here.
Councilman Stokes?
I'm here.
Thank you. And before we start with the hearing, I'll just go quickly through how the committee will approach public testimony for everyone who's joining us from the public. If you're connecting via computer, we ask that you use the raise hand function to let us know that you'd like to testify. Users who call in can't be identified by name and don't have a raise hand button. So we will unmute each caller individually during the public testimony portion of the hearing. If you're calling in and you do not wish to testify, please just say so when you're unmuted. Attendees will hear two beeps when you are unmuted. And we ask that each speaker state your name before beginning your testimony. And if we're not able to understand what you're saying, we'll ask you to either call back or provide testimony through the chat function. And here is just a view of the relevant controls for public attendees. In the lower right-hand corner, you should have a participants button and a chat button. If you hit the participants button, you should have a hand-shaped icon just above it and to the right that is to raise your hand. Depending on how you've logged in, that could also be next to your name and you list up participants further up. And if you're having difficulty finding the raise hand button, but you'd like to testify, you can use the chat function to send a message to the host and we will make sure that you get a chance to testify. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, we're ready to start. The first bill is 20-0619. It's the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as 1904, 1910, 1916 Light Street, Block 1037 with lots 001, 003, 006, and 009. As outlined in red on the accompanying plat, rezoning from an R8 zoning district to a C1 zoning district. I see here that all the public notice requirements have been met. And I'm going to turn it over to the sponsor, Councilman Costello. Councilman Costello, all three bills are yours, so it's Costello Day. So could you not only on this bill, but could you give us a synopsis or briefing on the other two bills also? Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate you designating an entire day for me in the 11th District. My constituents appreciate it. Mr. Chair, this first bill is a rezoning that will facilitate a development in the South Baltimore community. It does have support from the South Baltimore Neighborhood Association. There's a bill that deals with a property on Well Street, which is also in South Baltimore, which does have support of the South Baltimore Neighborhood Association. And then there is a, and that's essentially a correction. And then there's a third bill, which is also a correction in the Locust Point community. And that bill does have support from the Locust Point Civic Association, which is contingent upon a vote there on November 11th, which will occur prior to the next council meeting on November 16th. So I'm comfortable with having that bill forward in committee. Make sure that there be any issues, I'll work with the President's Office on second reader. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I respectfully request my colleagues' support for these bills. Happy to discuss or answer any questions, and as I'm sure there will be as we get into each of the three bills.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. I, being on the Planning Commission, all three bills, I've seen that the community associations have been, South Baltimore Community Association, Locust Point's been notified, South Baltimore sent a letter to share with my colleagues, and also the one in Locust Point, they support also in Locust Point. So, thank you. Right now, we're going to go on to the agency reports on Bill 20-0619. Planning Department?
Yes, my name is Kalil Obama. I presented this bill on October 8th, and I will be happy to answer any question if needed.
Okay, I mean, you want to give it, it's a favorable report from the planning staff and the Planning Commission?
Yes, yes, the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously in favor.
And so did the staff?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for the Planning Department? No? Okay. BMZA?
The BMZA recommends approval of this bill.
Thank you. DOT?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Liam Davis of Baltimore City DOT. DOT stands by its report, which is no objection.
Okay, thank you. Law Department?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. This is Victor Bala from the City Law Department. In the Planning Commission's written report, we have facts that they found. If you agree with the facts, you have enough facts to support this particular bill.
Okay, thank you. Let's do HCD?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our report in support of the bill.
Okay, thank you. BDC?
Ryan Rotany for BDC. BDC stands by its report in support of the bill.
Okay, thank you. Parking Authority?
Good afternoon, committee members. This is Brett Thorne with the Parking Authority. We have reviewed the proposed legislation and we do not oppose passage of the bill.
Okay, thank you. Matt, do we have any public testimony?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we have Al Berry here on behalf of the applicant. Before I unmute Mr. Berry, as a reminder for everyone joining us by computer, please use the raise hand function if you would like to testify. Mr. Berry?
Yes, yes, I'm here. Chairman Reissinger, members of the City Council, Al Berry, may be exposed associates, speaking on behalf of the owner and the developer. I believe the developer is also signed in if we have any questions. Without belaboring the issue, the Planning Commission's staff report before you fully discussed the rationale for finding a change and a mistake in the existing zoning, R8 zoning. This is an old industrial property, as detailed in the Planning Commission's report, that is in an area that has seen increasing multifamily development. And this particular zoning classification, C1, would allow sufficient flexibility for a very innovative plan that the owner and developer proposed to rehabilitate the building into. We've had numerous meetings with the community over several years about this, and we're very thankful for Councilman Costello and the committee for considering it at the end of the council session in order to get moving next year on the development of the project. Mr. Reedy is also on, if there are any questions, but I know you have a full agenda, so I'll leave it at that unless there are any questions. Thank you.
Committee members have a question. It looks like we don't, so at this time, we have a motion to move the finding of facts?
Oh, Mr. Chair, sorry to interrupt.
Well, sorry, I leave fall. Do we have anybody from the public? Matt, I'm sorry.
We just have one more caller, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm JJ Reedy with, representing 1900 Light Street. I'm here to answer any questions on the 716 phone number.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Costello?
Thank you. A quick question for Hillary Ruley from the Law Department. Are you completely satisfied with finding the facts? Have all been satisfied here?
Victor?
Or Victor, whoever.
This is, yeah, you're talking about your bill, 621, I think Councilman Costello. And this is 619? So, and as I understood it, Al Berry is going to present the findings of facts for 621 when we get there.
So he did. Who's from the Law Department is assigned to this bill?
Well, that's Hillary. Hillary's been assigned.
For 621?
Yeah. We want 619 now. So we're not on.
Right, who's for 6, who's assigned to 619?
That's me, Councilman Victor.
Thank you, Victor. My question for you is, does that satisfy the finding of facts?
The written report of the Planning Commission satisfies that, and Al Berry supported that, so we're good.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the finding of fact.
Okay, move by Costello. Do I have a second?
Second. Oops.
Who's second? Middleton? Middleton's second. All those in favor of the finding of facts, say aye. Those against, say nay. The ayes have it, the finding of facts is passed. There are no amendments to this bill. So at this time, I ask for a motion to move the bill.
Move the bill favorably, Mr. Chair?
Move by Costello. Do I have a second? Second. Second by Middleton. Let's take a vote. Reissinger votes yes. Sneed?
Yes.
Sneed's a yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark's a yes. Costello?
Yes.
Costello's a yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Dorsey's a yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton, yes. Pinkett?
Yes.
Pinkett's a yes. Stokes? Councilman Robert Stokes?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we have, we have eight yes. Bill passes favorable. Will come out on second reader on November the 16th. That takes care of that bill. We are now ready, just bear with me, we are now ready to go on to City Council Bill 20-0621. This is rezoning to East Well Street. The purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 2 East Well Street, Block 1030 Lot 082, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat. And we're rezoning this from an R8 to a C2 zoning district. All the public notice requirements have been met. Councilman Costello has already spoken. We will now hear from the agency's reps. Go ahead, Planning.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Eric Tiso for the Planning Commission. This bill was reviewed by them in a public meeting on October 8th, where the Planning Commission recommended favorable for the bill rezoned to C2. In brief, this is a mixed-use building. It has some ground floor commercial in it, which under the old zoning code was permitted for R8 residential buildings over 50 units. But it has somewhat of a limited palette of uses that can go there. So the current owners of the building are, in essence, looking for a little bit more of an option of what they can have for that ground floor commercial to support the building and the immediate surrounding area. So in our report, we went through some analysis of the variety of uses that can be done, and the C2 will provide that for them. One other minor thing I would point out is the block plat that was attached with this, I think is a dated plat, which has a bit of an indent into the property on the north side where Patapsco Street goes in. There was a partial street closing several years ago to enable this building to be built. So the block plat should probably be corrected so that you don't have a portion of the building accidentally split zen. But with that, the Planning Commission recommends favor. And your statement, sir.
Technical amendment?
Yes, yes, sir.
Technical amendment? There's too many, people gotta unmute, I mean, you gotta mute. Eric, that would be a technical amendment from the planning staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Planning? Okay, Councilman Costello, when it comes time, it's your amendment to move for a technical amendment? Councilman Costello?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all right. We're now go, there's no questions for Planning, I go to BMZA?
The BMZA recommends approval of this bill with the technical amendment.
Okay, thank you. DOT?
Mr. Chair, DOT stands by its bill report. No objection.
Okay, before we go on to the Law Department, is Mr. Joe Waltman, Mr. Joe Waltman, are you there? Because I want to keep this clean, even though sent over a, the finding of facts, I prefer recommend that you do the finding of facts verbally to keep it clean. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
You got the floor, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, it's nice to see everyone looking safe and healthy these days. Appreciate the opportunity to testify. We did submit a draft Land Use and Transportation Committee findings of fact. I'll just read that into the record at this time. Motion of the Chair of the Land Use and Transportation Committee after a public hearing, which agency reports and public testimony were considered and pursuant to Sections 10304 and 10305 of the Maryland Land Use Article and Section 5508 of the Baltimore City Code. City Council adopts these findings of fact concerning the rezoning of 2 East Well Street. City Council Bill 20-0621 rezoning. Upon finding as follows with regards to one population changes the population of South Baltimore neighborhood, continues to grow as a result of projects like the one constructed on the subject property. Number two, the availability of public facilities. Adequate public facilities are available for a variety of uses. Three, present and future transportation patterns. The property enjoys excellent access to I-95. Is in close proximity to transit in terms of city circulator routes. Number four, compatibility with existing and proposed development for the area. The rezoning is compatible with all existing and proposed development in the immediate area. Number five, the recommendations of city agencies and officials, including the Baltimore City Planning Commission and the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend passage of the bill. The BMZA also recommends passage of the bill. Number six, the proposed amendments relationship to inconsistency with the city's comprehensive master plan. The proposed amendment does conform to the comprehensive plan. Live Goal 1, Objectives 1, 2, and 5. Goal 2, Objective 4. Play Goal 1, Objective 4. Number seven, existing uses of the property with, within the general area of the property in question, there are a mix of commercial and residential uses in the general area. Number eight, the zoning classification of other property within the general area of the property in question. There are commercially zoned properties in close proximity to the subject property and in the general area, including a C2 property a few hundred feet away. Number nine, the suitability of the property in question for the use is permitted under its existing zoning classification. The property is not a rowhouse property as its existing R8 zoning would suggest. Number 10, the trend of development, if any, in the general area of the property in question, including changes, if any, that have taken place since the property in question was placed in its present classification. There are currently multiple development projects of a mixed-use and commercial nature in the general area. Number 11, for rezoning based on substantial change in the character of the neighborhood, the following facts establish the substantial change since the time of last comprehensive rezoning. There have been multiple changes to former industrial sites that are now being developed as mixed-use commercial projects in the area. The population of the neighborhood is growing and changing. The neighborhood is now a gateway to Baltimore, is in close proximity to the new neighborhood of Port Covington. Number 12, for rezoning based on a mistake in the existing zoning classification, the following facts establish that at the time of the last comprehensive zoning, the council failed to consider then existing facts or projects or trends, which are reasonably foreseeable and/or that events occurring subsequent to the comprehensive zoning have proven that the council's initial premises were incorrect. It was a mistake to zone a 65-foot high-mixed-use building, which includes approximately 6,000 square feet of commercial spaces on R8 rowhouse district property. The building did exist at the time of the last comprehensive zoning. With that, I'll submit the findings of fact as drafted.
People have to unmute, I mean mute. Law Department? Law Department?
Hi, Mr. Chair. This is Hillary Ruley for the Law Department.
Good afternoon.
We stand by our report. As long as facts are found, then the Law Department would approve it for form and legal sufficiency.
Okay, thank you. HCD? Okay, Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hillary, are the facts as provided sufficient?
I mean, that would be for a quarter or a year really, as the body to decide. That's up to you guys.
Okay.
I feel like they're sufficient, but I'm not a lawyer, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah. Thank you, Council. Good point. HCD?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Stephanie Murdock with the Department of Planning and Community Development. We stand by our report. We do not object to the passage of this bill.
Thank you. BDC? BDC?
Ryan Rotany for BDC. BDC stands by its report and supports passage of the bill.
Thank you. Let's go to the Parking Authority.
Hello again. Brett Thorne, the Parking Authority. We do not oppose passage of the bill.
Thank you. Let's, Matt, let's go to public testimony. Do we have anyone?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do not see any additional people from the public with their hand raised. Just a reminder, if you do want to testify, please use the raise hand function to let us know you have problems with the fact, so use the chat function.
Do we?
Mr. Chair, it does not look like we have any additional public testimony.
Okay, thank you. At this time, do I have a motion to move the finding of facts?
Mr. Chair?
Costello?
Yeah, I just, Hillary, I didn't mean to be flippant in my comment earlier about I'm not a lawyer and you are. So I hope you take it that way. I just have, I'm asking if the findings of fact are sufficient, just to cut off any issues that may come down the road. Eric, can you opine on that at all? Eric Tiso? Did Planning Commission, Planning Commission provided?
Yes, sir. I believe that that should be sufficient to support it. I mean, it's, I would go through, in my staff report, quite some exercise of comparing C1, C2, OR1, and the existing R8, and it kind of lives in between all of those realms of possibility. So I think that's sufficient.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the findings of fact.
Okay, move by Councilman Costello. Do I have a second?
Councilman Stokes?
Stokes seconds. All those in favor of the finding of facts, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any opposition? No? The ayes have it, the finding of facts is passed. We have a technical amendment to this bill. Do I have a motion for a technical amendment?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the technical amendment.
Okay, move by Councilman Costello. Do I have a second?
Clark, second.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of the technical amendment, say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the amendment's passed. We will now move to vote the bill favorable with the technical amendment. Reissinger votes, yes.
He needed a motion, Mr. Chair. I move the bill favorably as amended.
Okay, do I have a second? Clark, you have a second for? Okay. Second, she seconds the amendment. Now we're going to vote favorable as amended.
Yes. I second.
Had it down here. Councilman Costello wanted confirmed, so we confirmed it. Reissinger votes yes. Sneed?
Yes.
Sneed is a yes. Clark?
Sorry, yes.
Clark's a yes. Costello?
Yes.
Costello's a yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Dorsey's a yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton's a yes. Pinkett?
Yes.
Pinkett's a yes. Councilman Robert Stokes?
Councilman Reissinger.
You say yes?
Councilman Reissinger?
Councilman Stokes?
Yes. Can you hear me? Yes.
Yes, I got you. I hear you now. We have eight yes, affirmative. This bill passes, will come out on second read on November the 16th. Now we're on the last bill. Just give me a minute. Okay, I'm back. We are now on City Council Bill 20-0622. This is rezoning and the purpose of changing the zoning for the property is known as 1312, 1314, and 1316 Ford Avenue, Block 2018A, Lots 023, 024, and 025, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat. Rezoning from an R8 zoning district to the C1 zoning district, and also by changing the zoning for the property known as 1318 East Ford Avenue, which is Block 2018A, Lot 026, as outlined in blue on the accompanying plat, from a I1 zoning district to the C1 zoning district. Also, public notice requirements have been met. And we will start with the agency reports. Planning?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eric Tiso again for the Planning Commission. This bill also was reviewed by the Planning Commission in their meeting of October 8th, where they recommended favorable for the rezoning to the C1 district. In brief, this series of properties, 1318 East Ford Avenue is the office of Southwood Builders. They're looking at expanding, so they were able to purchase 1314, 1316 adjacent properties. And they met with me to talk about how to accomplish that, how to go through the rezoning. So I recommended they speak with the owners of 1312 East Ford Avenue, and they were able to get those residents and homeowners to support being included with the bill, because we didn't want to have a sliver, a single property of R8 between the future C1 uses and the railroad tracks. And in looking at the use of the building, I went through some of the permit history, and I think I can see where a mistake had been made. The last authorized use under the old zoning code for Southway's offices was a former use. We had contractor shop and yards. Typically, that use was not just the office facility, but also had a storage lot where you could have either building materials, have your vehicles, construction equipment, things of that nature. Even though Southway is a contractor, they don't have any of that storage and heavy equipment on the property. It's a building, it's a parking lot. So it's really more of an office use, which is more appropriate to the C1 district. And so we recommend that the council adopt that and approve rezoning. I go into a little bit more detail in my staff report, but I don't want to belabor that. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for, Mr. Tiso? Any questions? No?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Clark?
I thought it was 18 that was, I don't know. So basically, there's one of these houses that is residential, one of these properties. You did mention it, Mr. Tiso. I presume that, and I'm sure because I know from history, everybody agreed, the residential property, the owners agreed to all this, and they're happy with it?
Yes, they signed on with the application to indicate their support. We wouldn't want to push that on them. If anything else, this is an upzoning for them. If nothing else, increase the value of their property. And if someday in the future, they're done with that home and want to retire to Florida, then Southway may be interested in buying it.
We're not talking about Florida right now. But otherwise, thank you.
Okay. Costello, you? Okay, thank you. BMZA?
The BMZA recommends approval of this bill.
Thank you. DOT?
Mr. Chair, this is Liam Davis of Baltimore City DOT. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection.
Thank you. Law Department?
Good afternoon, it's Vic Turvolo from the City Law Department. Uh, in the Planning Commission's report, both in the written report and the oral report, we have sufficient facts in there to support the rezoning of this bill. We are going to approve it for form of legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Victor. Appreciate it. Uh, HCD?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Stephanie Murdock again from the Department of Housing. We stand by our bill report in support of the bill.
Thank you. BDC?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Ryan Rotany for BDC. BDC stands by its report in support of the bill.
Thank you. Uh, Parking Authority?
Hello again, Brett Thorne with the Parking Authority. We do not oppose passage of the bill.
Okay, thank you. Uh, at this time, Matt, we have any public testimony?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we have one hand raised and, um, before I unmute Caroline Hecker, I'll just remind everyone else, uh, one last time. Uh, if you would like to testify, please use the raise hand function. Caroline?
Good afternoon, Caroline Hecker, Rosenberg, Martin, Greenberg, on behalf of the applicant. Um, I believe Paul Littman, who's the founder of Southway Builders, is also on the line, um, as well. We're happy to answer any questions that you have. I want to thank Councilman Costello for his support of the bill and for introducing this. Um, looking very closely with the Locust Point Civic Association on an MOU that will govern the operation of the property. Uh, any more questions?
Let's, um, any, any, uh, any questions for Caroline Hecker? No? Okay. Uh, so, uh, no? Alper? So let's, let's go on to finding of facts. Do I have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to say one, uh, two things real quick. One?
Go ahead, you got the floor, go ahead.
Thank you to Eric and Victor for confirming that the finding of facts are, are sufficient. Uh, and number two, I, I did want to note again that there is support from the Locust Point Civic Association, which is the community association of record. Is contingent upon execution of an MOU, uh, which is scheduled to be voted on by the community on, uh, November, uh, 12th. So, um, we have enough time, or November 11th, I believe, uh, we have enough time to, um, move the bill now and we will deal with that on, on second read. If there are any issues, I don't anticipate there being any issues. Um, with that, I move the findings of fact.
You, Councilman, uh, you moved the finding of facts. Do I have a second? Second, only counsel?
Second. Clark.
Councilwoman Clark. All, all those in favor of the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those in favor? Everyone else? Finding of fact? Okay. Uh, opposed, say nay? Okay, so the ayes have it, the facts passed. There are no amendments to this bill. Do I have a motion to move the bill favorable?
I move the bill favorably.
Costello, second by Clark, move it.
Clark.
Clark. We'll take a vote on the bill. Rice singer votes yes. Sneed?
Yes.
Sneed is a yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is a yes. Costello?
Yes.
Costello's a yes. Dorsey, are you still there? I know you had to leave at 1:30. Dorsey? Dorsey is absent. He had a prior commitment. He told us he'd have to leave at 1:30. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is a yes. Pinkett?
Yes.[1756.12]